We're gonna give them a choice. You came in with a, with a request for capital well after the timeframe.
Yeah.
And it's out of our $300,000 limit. You have a choice of either doing the ADA study or putting a math and focus in. Which of the two would you prefer?
I would like to suggest that that is something the board as a whole should vote on, number one.
I don't have a problem with that.
Um, I think, I have a feeling from my conversations with Dr. Morrison that he's done a lot of research on the legal side of exposure, vulnerability and so on. My recollection from a conversation with him was that the enforcement of ADA-
I'm just trying to lay it out of the conversation.
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm explaining why I think this needs to be in here.
Okay, great.
Um, his understanding is that if you have made an assessment and you are making good faith attempts and work at climbing up that list, you fix the parking lot one year. Maybe you say, we're gonna resurface this in five years, at that time we'll regrade it, but we're not gonna do it specially now. They are apparently taking that as the sign of a plan with good intention and not penalizing the institutions. That's why this is here, so you get ahead of it. It's not that we're gonna open up vulnerability, so.
And we can achieve the same thing essentially to say we're taking good effort by asking Jen Collins Brown to please go through and give us a list of any things that she see of particular
Whether, yeah.
An issue. So I think- And if somebody asks, have you done it? We say, we had our ADA.
Want me to bring that back to Dr. Morrison?
Now, you've, no, you've gotta talk to Scott and you've got to talk with KP because there may be a very clear reason. She is our officer for that, but she is not a trained ADA assessor.
Right, that's true.
And then-
But she has the opportunity and some knowledge.
All I'm saying is we ought to find what we're getting into because we don't know.
Okay.
So I've, I've got two action items.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on beyond that because we don't matter over that one.
Twenty first?
Yeah, twenty is the same. Word for word should be the same.
Okay, I guess, uh, oh, yeah, yeah, the, the change, if you change the steward, you change the, the same way.
You change nineteen, you change twenty.
That's right, I just wrote the same as prior.
Except you change the word steward, by the way, the proctor, don't forget. Yeah. Twenty first. So, um, change the title to fire sprinkler improvements for public works building.
Sorry, just, it's not the delay, but that, there's a very important item that came up.
It's weak.
It's like when Jackson's aware of as well. Um, and I wanna just, because it's relevant to this ask, because this ask comes out of the highway department. Um, specifically, that's where the thirty of the, thirty of the sixty-five thousand we funded from there, sixty, uh, thirty-five thousand will come out of the water enterprise. However, um, our BACO, which is around eleven years old, ten-
Highway Department BACO.
The highway.
BACO.
But it's used as well for water from time to time.
Oh, yeah, water department uses it frequently.
Absolutely, that's why there's a split on, on maintenance and split for purchasing new equipment, as you know. That piece of equipment is on the capital plan for 2024. That piece of equipment is-
To the tune of about a hundred and forty thousand.
Ooh. For BACO?
BACOs are expensive, the hydraulics are, hydraulics-
The front lower BACO?
No, it's a BACO. It's got one of these things on the front.
It's not a little, it's not a little garden variety BACO.
Okay.
You know, these are very heavy.
It's a professional grade BACO, that's the point.
Yeah, so basically, um, that piece of equipment went in to get re, uh, the brakes done on it and it cost a few thousand dollars, maybe less.
Six.
Was it six to do the brakes?
It's expensive brakes. Do you really need to stop?
Six thousand bucks to do the brakes.
Drop the back, drop the bucket to stop.
You're going down this floor.
Well, it gets worse.
So he went, we brought a piece of equipment and they came back and said, are you sitting down, there's some additional work that needs to be done. Basically, you have to rebuild, as I understand, the front end of it, um, or is the back end-
Transmission. They found the transmission issue.
And so that, they estimate the cost to-
Another six grand.
Eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, then they had to change some fuel system.
Sorry, I think there was a couple of other things that they-
There were three, there were three functions.
Eighteen grand i- in round numbers total, okay?
So what, what-
You want, you want me to take it from here?
Yeah, go ahead, tell us.
The board wants to take it from here.
The, the machine is, was expected to be a fifteen, fifteen-year machine, okay? We got about eleven, eleven years on it.
Okay.
And we're talking about the fact that do we really wanna spend twenty grand on a machine that's only a couple of years left anyway, that was due to be replaced in 2024?
Which has been eleven is-
And, and, and Gary said that the machine has been a goddamn problem since day one.
That's a darn short.
He spent five thousand bucks on it in the last-
Three, four?
Three, four years, something like that. And he said it's been a problem ongoing for a long time and, and highway department considers it to be a limit.
Is it because the wrong choices made at the time of purchase or we just shot the price and didn't get the all?
It was a John Deere machine, ain't there anything wrong with John Deere machinery, but he wouldn't buy another John Deere at this point in time.
So the, um, oh, sorry, quit it.
No, go.
So we had a good conversation, um, um-
Gary and Kevin and I talked, in Phil's absence.
Yeah, so we had a, we had a good conversation and, you know, we looked at from the operations standpoint, what we're dealing with, but also what's the financial breakdown of that? And so the cost, the, the cost on the, um, uh, the market cost right now off the state bid list is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for that new piece of equipment. Twenty thousand dollars in a trade and, and to the, second again, uh, I'm sorry, second book Jackson's comment earlier about the cost, we're projecting out a greater cost at a hundred and twenty-five as time goes on because it rises to the one forty-five.
Well, I guessed at one forty or one fifty.
Yeah, that, but that's right, that's what the cost would be in the future. So the trade-in of the existing equipment, um, as is, is around twenty thousand dollars. That gives us a hundred and five thousand dollar cost. Split that fifty-fifty with the water enterprise, it's fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. The useful life of the new piece of equipment conservatively is twelve years, they say it could go up to fifteen years. Now, if you look at the cost to repair the, the BACO right now, you're looking at eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, no trade-in value to that. And then you look at the water contribution, water on maintenance of equipment is a two, two-third, one-third breakdown. So two-thirds come from the highway, one-third comes from the water.
Yeah.
So the dollar amount of contribution from the water in this case is six thousand, one eighty-seven. That gives us a grand total out of this budget, the highway budget of twelve thousand, five sixty-three. Now, if you do a useful life-
Of twelve thousand?
If you reduce down the six thousand of the water out of, I'm just talking highway-
Customer repair.
Okay.
Repair on the eighteen thousand.
If we did the repair.
Yeah, repair.
That gets us a twelve-five.
Yeah.
If you take that twelve-five and you take in the cost per year to buy the new BACO, which if you amortize that out-
Cost per year?
Over twelve years at a hundred and five thousand dollars and then broken the fifty-two, fif- five hundred. If you take that, you say useful life's twelve years, break that out, that's four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars a year, assuming no other maintenance has to happen to it, we know that'll happen, but just for round numbers. If you take that number, you divide that by the twelve thousand, five sixty-three, that's a two-point-eight-seven year payback, useful life payback. So if we made that eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollar investment today, assuming that a new piece of equipment lasts twelve years, our payback's around three years. So if that equipment does, if it's able to last us three more years, we break even. Now, that being said, if it's fifteen years useful life on that piece of equipment, it's closer to three and a half years, four years. This piece of equipment, as it's been explained to us, has been a problem, it's starting to see it's at the end of its useful life.
We're just trying to sell and justify the dollars now versus fixing it versus buying a new one.
Looking at real numbers, just, real numbers go across the board.
So we sold a new one, what, what is that, how are you gonna do that?
What's the trade-in?
In three hundred thousand.
That gets us to the warrant article.
Now, now we're-
Go ahead, go.
Now we're gonna talk about the warrant article.
So what we talked about is the sprinkler system, it's something that we've spent a lot of time on, we know it's, it's something that it needs. Talked about bumping that out to next year, taking the BACO, which is in 2024, moving that into now.
Yeah.
And then moving, there was a couple of pieces that we may move up one year or back one year, because we didn't have a heavy snow season, they're looking at buying a new sidewalk club. He says, because we didn't use it that much, we can probably get another year.
In twenty-one, or twenty-two, we'd move that out. But that's the future, okay, what about this year?
Basically moving, uh, two, three items up one year and moving the one that's four years out since today. And then taking out the sprinkler system for this year, putting it to next year. Now, the dollar amounts don't add up, we're talking fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollar cost for a new piece of equipment for the highway. Fifty percent of that would then be, the other fifty-two thousand, five hundred come from the water enterprise. This is sixty-five thousand, thirty thousand split, so it's, it's growing in cost for this year, so that's-
So, so it's interesting though, I just, because it's, it's an equal cost to purchase it, but a two-thirds, one-third cost to maintain it?
That's how I understand it from the, yeah.
Okay?
I don't, I don't understand why, but that's the deal.
Just, I just-
History.
Next, okay, go ahead.
The question is-
I got it, I got it.
Yeah, what the appetite might be to, at this point in the game, based on where we are today, we don't need that, that piece of equipment until-
But you didn't come up with fifty-two thousand yet, we've come up with thirty thousand.
So what we could do is we could either bump this up to fifty-two in the warrant article from the thirty and just say, our capital's more, we could keep it at thirty and look to supplement some of that cost.
So we want three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for capital instead of three hundred thousand?
Yeah, it's twenty-five, yeah, roughly, twenty-two, twenty-five. And then substitute that, basically, we could, if we did that for the warrant article, or we could do the thirty thousand dollar contribution as we have it right here for that, to put towards it. And then the residual amount comes, you know, it's just at this point where, what you pluck it from for special town meeting or for, at the time when we do the, um, uh, you know, snow and ice or something like that, where we haven't seen a huge amount of expenditures around that. So there's different buckets that we could pull the rest from potentially.
We get about eighty-six grand left in the snow and ice budget.
And so, and that covers us for three-ish storms according to, to Gary at this point. And at this point, it may, um, much-
You can't, you can't, uh-
We're hopeful.
You can't transfer money, you can't transfer money from the budget in this year at the annual town meeting, you can do it at the special town meeting.
That's what he meant.
So you're talking about trying to do the-
Support of the deal would be-
Trying to do the thing in the spe- the whole frame, the whole BACO in the STM.
We could, or we need a partial of it.
I'd rather see it in this, because this is a, this, you don't do, you don't do-
Well, the other-
Hundred and twenty thousand dollar work, equipment in the STM, that's okay.
Available.
The, the, the other part of the discussion is that we, we-
We may have to go to the FinComs and-
We discussed the situation.
It could be, it could be a, uh, uh, a reserve fund transfer because it's, needs to be helped, so we're certainly not gonna do that, but, you know, let us go to try to-
Let's not worry about the mechanism.
Two points I wanna make right now.
I wanna think we should do it or not.
Gary needs to have a BACO by about the first of April, because he's about to start paving around the first of April. And this is a machine that gets used in that process.
If he purchased it today, could he get it by then?
Yeah, it's on, it's in stock.
It's in stock.
So one of the things, if we, if we perch, if we had to delay a purchase for any reason too, um-
Oh, they would give him a loaner.
But, right, but if we say we're gonna purchase this at this time because of the timing of everything, between now and, you know, May fifth, um, they would give us a loaner, he said they would be the one that gives, a loaner and no cost to use it, knowing that we're purchasing it.
We discussed the fire, the, the fire suppression system. Uh, and, and-
You gotta move it out.
My, my input was, we've lived with it for fifteen years without it.
Absolutely.
So one more year and a big gamble.
No, no problem.
We've already got one, by the way, that functions in the water department, the only thing we're, the only-
So, Gary, we have one in the water department, uh, water treatment plant.
Sprinkler system in the treatment, water treatment.
Oh, in the treatment, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a dry pipe at the highway department.
I understand, I, I know it, I know it all about it. I looked at it this morning, okay.
It sounds like the, the, the working consensus is that-
We're gonna pull this.
We should pull this and you're gonna have to do the trade with the BACO and you're gonna work the numbers and bring it back to us. I don't want us to try and figure out all the numbers and where things come from now.
Well-
But we can and will look at that when we come back.
What I'll do is I'll put this in as the full fifty-two-five and then the waters contribution, just like it's broken out in this, this item here. What I'll, when we bring it back to you, if there's concerns, as you, as you sort of think through this about if, if it makes sense to do it in its entirety as a warrant article, increasing that capital, um, I'll think of some other solutions and mechanisms, mechanisms to try to get there.
Okay.
And we're talking to the FinCom about this.
What, what alternatives do you have beside one article?
One article?
So this is the article we put through.
Just gonna be one article to do the BACO, right?
For the purposes of warrant, yes.
For the purpose of the warrant.
If you tell me though that fifty, if you, if I come in at the fifty-two-five and, and, you know, we talked to FinCom and they say, no way, no how, it's gotta be thirty or less, I'm gonna, we're gonna have to come up with twenty-two thousand dollars to, to cover the rest of that cost if it's thirty thousand dollars that we're gonna put towards the BACO. And I need to tell you and explain sort of what that mechanism of how we can get there if it's not gonna be funded through the, um, the warrant article.
I, I see it-
In its entirety.
I see it in the warrant article, yeah, okay.
I mean, then you folks make that decision too, so I mean, just-
No, I think that's the right way to do it, I think you should go forward and put that together for us to get, I'll be, so that, um, and I, Dick, let's put it into the whole amount.
Conceptually, we've agreed though, I think.
Yeah, no, we're gonna switch them out and the idea of moving things up by a year, bringing that one forward, it makes sense.
Now, does the water department have the money? Are they, are they on board?
According to Gary, I haven't talked to Greg, I haven't any-
It's really not fifty-two thousand.
Gary, listen, Gary has talked to Greg and Greg has told Gary he's got the money.
Okay.
I think it'll, it'll basically just sub up at sixty-five probably, that they're looking for for the sprinklers, that they've had earmarked for the sprinklers.
I'm sure of it.
So he's probably saving a little, actually, I think.
Yeah, okay, next.
Security systems, security cameras, okay. So, um, no, nothing much here. Oh, just add town, capital T-O-W-N in front of the library, people pretty much would assume, but it officially, it is the town library versus Stuart's Obro or somebody Obro.
The only other thing Lynn mentioned on that was she had the question if it's solely for the inside or it's gonna be inside and outside. I need to confirm that, um, with Laura, I know it's inside.
Or whether inside cameras or outside cameras?
I know they're inside cameras, I just don't know if there's like one camera that might be pointing at the front entrance or something like that.
There oughta be a front entrance camera.
There usually is, but I, I just gotta confirm that specifics for her and I'll share that with the rest of the board.
I think the more, the more we know probably, the better. Oh, I know though, I did have this. Do we really want that second sentence in the explanation? This will help deter petty theft vandalism and disruptive behavior?
Yes, I think we need that.
I don't, uh, I, I would recommend taking those words out, I don't think that's a nice thing to throw into a warrant article.
But those are the reasons.
They can be discussed, but thi- this is something that is hardwired in there, um-
Yeah, I don't think you need to put that in, it, it's a matter of a security system is what it is.
Security system, I would take that, I would take that out. I, this, you don't, this is to help people, I agree, but we're making, I, I think it's the wrong kind of thing.
Well, I think it, it's implying that we've got disruptive-
Next.
Behavior and petty theft and vandalism, it's implying-
You agree to take it out?
Yeah, but do we need to put it in the frigging warrant article?
Well, I, I guess town voting money on this, I don't think, I don't-
I don't, I, if, if they wanna talk about it, let it, let it be explained on the town meeting floor.
Yes, yes.
Are we afraid to mention it?
I don't think you ought to put it in, I don't think you-
No, I'm asking you a question.
I don't think you ought to imply that we've got those kind of problems.
We have enough discretion to not put it in.
No, I understand, I'm not disagreeing with that with all, but I think it's, first of all, a lot of-
I mean, good discretion is what I'm saying.
A lot of people don't realize that there is petty theft and it's a significant problem at the library.
What's the petty theft that they've had?
They've lying about-
What's the petty theft that they've had?
Ninety-five DVDs.
Ninety-five DVD. Yeah, okay, magazines, there's a lot of things that go in. So those things, the other thing too is that for some parents who put kids in the library, you hear stories, Winchester Public Library had this problem a couple of years ago.
There's two of us that say take it out, you wanna continue?
Do you wanna table it for when, for select again?
Just that sentence.
Or reuse this year or?
We can put it back in.
No, I, I'm willing to-
You wanna highlight it?
We're not moving, it's a consensus.
What I'd like to highlight, I guess-
The consensus is to take it out and we do a motion, we'll, later on, Lynn will put it back in. Next, we really have so much to do.
No, Dick, hang on, just a second, I'm in the middle of trying to say something, please, hold on, take a breath. What I would like to do is leave it in as potential based upon what the librarian says, if that, if, if things she wants the town to be aware of our issues in the library, if she says we don't need to raise their worries or concerns, comes out.
She, I read this to her on Friday and I, I asked if she wanted me to change anything or include anything and she said that sounds fine, but at, at the same time, I don't know if we took it out, if she'd have any issues with that, I just don't, as it stood, she did sort of verbally sign off on it, I guess, but, um-
I don't think it's, I don't think it's a huge deal and I think the nature of the process is we can, we've got the quorum here, so they say take it out, take it out. I think it won't stay, but that's okay, let's move on.
Grocery canis consent.
Win some and you lose some.
Oh, yeah. I'm on to the next, I passed it, passed it.
Still get it passed.
Why do we have the, that yellow thing down there that says consent, uh, agenda two way down at the end of the consent?
It's coming out.
Yeah, I, I-
Highlight it, it's in the wrong part.
I'll be honest with you.
I'm worried, it's, it's-
I won't, I won't hang you for that.
That's all coming out.
Flights in yellow.
It's all coming out anyway, Gary.
Just, just about that, if you would. It refers to, in order to prolong the useful life, uh, I, I would suggest we change it to preserve. Prolong indicates that you're just kinda going a little bit more, obviously you gotta keep maintaining it, but I would say to preserve, preserve what we have, to preserve the useful life.
That's fine, makes some sense.
Then on the next one down, well rehabilitation.
So take out the two asterisks to start with.
Yes, you are.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
All the two asterisks, ones are out.
All of them, okay. So, um, on the, on the sprinkler system, I spent some time with, with Greg, of course, on the wording. I sent him this wording, but he hasn't come back on, oh, I went to tell him. Well, well rehabilitation.
Oh, okay.
What I'm saying is I usually wanna go through with, with, get his input on it, but anyway, I, I've changed it, uh, I think it's pretty simple. It, it begins the second line, money to fund, that's a typical wording that we would use, money to fund a study to evaluate and recommend, pump station, uh, yeah, those words, okay? So money to fund a study to evaluate and recommend pump. I'll send you this stuff. Then, uh, are you able to see the markup?
No.
Can you download the thing, I know if you downloaded?
It is downloaded, Dick, I've got this, a separate window in Word right now, I'm not looking at it online.
And it's, and you have, uh, track, oh, you have to, you have to go up to, um, track changes and you wanna see, you wanna see-
Markup options.
Mark, you wanna see all markup, at the very top, you wanna see all markup. Does it say, all markup, there you go.
Okay.
There you go, excellent, okay. So, oh, yeah, that's easy, so you can follow through then.
One thing I thought too, just as you're going through, one last thing, something I observed that I wanted to change after I hit ascend button on this and didn't wanna do anything with the version controls, adding pump station and well rehabilitation study as the title.
Okay, that's, yeah.
Good, it's more accurate for Facebook.
That is, that's appropriate.
I don't have a problem with the language as it's here, as Dick's put it in.
Okay, and so, uh, and so we-
Am I looking at the right one? I've got the, the, the changes that you suggested earlier.
You do, right?
Yeah, you're looking at the right ones.
We have to change the word to fund, to, uh, to fund a study evaluating and recommend, right?
That's right.
Yeah, great, okay, and then we, we fixed the, um, the, uh, motion to read correctly, transfer and appropriate, um, and then, uh-
Did you get that, Kevin?
Transfer and appropriate, that's all.
Recommend that the town vote to transfer and appropriate.
If you have that now, I'm gonna call you here with, I'm gonna call you here with that.
To transfer and appropriate.
There it is.
And you have it like-
Which is in there, correct?
Yeah, it's in there, okay. All right. So, uh, good, that's the only thing that it changed in, what, it changed in that part, uh, the, the motion.
Correct.
Okay, and, and that's an excellent explanation that he put in there.
Yeah, you're good.
My goodness gracious, okay, now it is a math and focus. So, you wanna talk to us?
So you're happy with that now, uh, you're happy with twenty-four?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. You're taking out the hundred thousand?
Uh, no, we just moved it, right.
The order of-
The hundred thousand was put in-
Oh, you took, took it out above but left it in down below.
We moved it down below so that you can put transfer and appropriate-
I got you.
Uh, from, because, uh, from, from the article.
Right.
Yeah, I see what you did.
I'll, I'll look at your notes, I'll take it as they are.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna send you this, right? Well, you have it already, it's in Word docs.
Well, yeah, right, I can access it, but I'll use that. Um, so math and focus upgrade, so, um, there's been a long conversation, as you know, about the school budget and one of the things that their, conversation that the FinComs have with the schools-
This is the one we just got, right?
It's the one we just got, like late, late in the week last week.
Yeah.
Um, and so it's a placeholder for right now, because the FinComs having the conversation with the schools on how they spend for curriculum items. For instance, one of the things that was commented in, um, some of the members in the board that were present, meeting Monday with the FinCom, heard them say that curriculum should be spread out over a number of years.[1445.31] I'm not in the schools, I don't know if that's the accurate way to do it, but at the end of the day, they're bringing that up, rather than having every three or eight years.
A big bump.
A big bump, which they put into their operating budget, but through the conversations with the school committee, they, they asked if we could put it into the warrant. They're not sure if it's going to be in the budget right now, they're not sure if it's going to be requested into the warrant, but this is a placeholder, as I think the FinCom and the schools negotiate where this particular item should go. At the end of the day, we, the board has a say in that, because if we say it's not going in the warrant, then they're going to have to find another place to pull it, which would be the operating budget.
Yeah.
In which case, FinCom's going to have to figure out what that looks like and how much we're asking for through the, that process. So, that's purely what this is. I got this, like I said, very late in the process, which is fine, it's part of, but what it is, is basically, eight years ago, they had curriculum math and focus, this is an upgrade to the system. I'm confirming the price, the 8,000 was a verbal I got, but I wanted to just, I said, give me.
Eighty-four.
Give me a little bit.
I think I'm hearing.
Is that what it is, eighty-four? So, it's.
I'm hearing that, yeah.
Yeah, I asked them to give me a little bit better on those numbers, so the title.
So, here's some, here's some of the issues though. So, they, they did essentially purchase this thing back, it said eight years, at one point I heard six years, but it didn't hear it said eight years ago, and have been using it since. But a lot more has happened with online. And so, they, the company has come out with an upgraded version of it that works with online stuff, and that's what it says up here too. The company wants some upfront money for the version, and in the part of the way they've structured it here, the version gives you this quote, three years' worth of usage. So, in some ways, it's really a mix, it would seem, of, of, of one-time charge, meaning you could consider it capital, and an operating cost if it's by the year. It's not broken out that way at all, it's eighty, whatever, for three years' worth of stuff, but after three years, then you have, you have to come up with some money. So, I don't know what the origins are, it's still being discussed. My druthers are, if you would, to figure out, how much is it going to cost in year four, and say, okay, if there's no other way to do it, and say, okay, well, that's what's in your operating budget, and we'll take that out of the eighty-four and, you know, make arrangements so that amortize it out for the rest of the, whatever. So, that, that's some of the stuff that's up in the air about this. But the important thing to understand is, it came in late, and it drives us over the $300,000.
Yep.
Right. Okay. So, we're waiting for more.
We're going to leave them at a tape machine.
No, this is, this is a common complaint for, with the FinCom about the fact that school budgets come in so frigging late, they can't, you can't get any.
They're working on that and whatnot this year.
Well, Kevin's talking to Scott too.
Well, we're going to.
So, I would change the wording though, on the, on the description here though, and it would read, after K through, in the beginning, that K through six would update the, the, the addition, which, the addition, oh, the addition the school has been using for eight years. It's very difficult to say the current addition that they've been using for eight years.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
Yeah, it's, it's.
So, that's why, okay? And, and then continue on, but, is not supported by, and, and then at the bottom there, it covers, it includes teacher, whatever, whatever. Those are the only changes. Okay.
You're going to, just, I, I'm going to make a spelling which, I had a typo.
Yes, thank you.
Um, so the sentence, the sentence before the last description. Um, the new version addresses the technology issues, it eliminates the traditional textbook, incorporates a soft cover workbook that is.
Oh, yes, that's in there too.
Carried with an online version of the textbook.
It's in there, yeah, I got it in there, I'm sorry.
Dick, at the school committee meeting, they requested from the admin to go back to the vendor and see if they could pay yearly.
Yeah, it's one of the things that's.
That was up on the table, rather than this lump sum.
Yeah.
And if it's yearly, then the issue is putting it in the budget.
Just for your permission, too.
But it may be this breakout, it may be a breakout of, you, you give us 50,000.
There could be another option here as well.
So, this good chance.
And 10,000, 10,000, 10,000 equals eighty. Right. Okay. One-time planner?
So, I circle part-time planner. I know we've had some conversations with the ZVA and planning board around the new position we're looking for. There's conversation around the actual title, what the position will be. We need to have a further discussion about that. The, the position itself though, whatever we're going to call it, planner or other, is part-time, and I, I have spoken with Martha Morrison to give her a heads up that this is something, we're still discussing what that title will be, but this is a placeholder, and we're working through it, that, that'll be in the warrant.
She'd like it not to be planner. And as far as I'm concerned, we could call it development officer or anything, but we need to just come up with something.
We had a guy one time, did we? What did we call him?
Land use coordinator.
Land use coordinator, that's what he was.
Is that what Martha references? Martha references, we had somebody.
Oh, yeah.
Land use coordinator.
Hey, let me tell you, he was a weird dude. He didn't last very long.
I think this, yeah, this is a really important position. I think we have support from the board, planning board, as well as the zoning board appeal. FinCom, we've spoken with them, I've spoken to them on this, I think, both individually and then in a, in a, in a meeting, I think we'll get, yeah, I think we'll get support on this position. The one thing I need to do is, I'm going to clean up the explanation a little bit. This is the last one I put in late Saturday, and I, I want to do a better job on the write-up. I don't know if you had any specific edits.
Yeah, I did have some. Just mentioned one thing, math and focus, I put in dashes between that, because that.
Oh, sure, okay.
Okay. So, yeah, well, the first thing is, that, not to pay, but to fund the FY21 salary, you got that stuff right. I'm going to send you this, yeah.
Yep.
And then it's raise and assess and appropriate the sum of 40,000, that's how you have to write it. Raise and assess and appropriate. Sometimes we did it raise, assess, but raise and assess, I'll just add the and assess. And then it's, I would say, you say salary up here, say salary down there.
Yep.
Keep it consistent, okay? And then you said for explanation, oh, I just, I just changed administration providing day-to-day, and then, and supporting. So, it's all in the same.
Yeah, I'll, I'll sort of think.
Providing or supporting, foot writing, you know, I N G.
What I would suggest, as you rewrite that, Kevin, is focusing on new services that would support the town, and the coordination role in light of our economic development goals and dreams. Because saying grant writing, a certain amount of grant writing, writing in administration, that's kind of weak, everybody does that. Day-to-day communication with the business community, that's not the most important thing.
It's a soft one, yeah.
That's a soft goal. And so, long story short, you know where I'm going with that. We'll look at it as a separate piece when you have a chance.
Yeah, I'll definitely.
It needs more teeth.
It definitely doesn't. I, I, more, I guess this was a placeholder for me to kind of get this to you guys.
No, no, it's cool, come back and know this is what I wanted to talk.
This is definitely what I identified.
So, on to set 27.
Uh, stabilization fund, same language.
Boilerplate.
Same language, same thing with the capital stabilization fund and the other post-employment benefits. Under.
Pretty much boilerplate stuff, isn't it, Dick?
At these days, it is.
The, the only thing I would do is not that, you said, you wind up saying it in two places, essentially. The capital stabilization fund, the purpose setting an annual address, what did it say, rainy day fund in there? Oh, maybe not, oops.
Well, it does up at the general stabilization fund. Calls it a rainy day. It says, it says it is sometimes called a rainy.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, one thing I noticed too, on the 29, which is the OPEP, that's increased by $20,000 from last year, here are the guidelines.
That's the way they had it planned.
Yeah.
And. Just fix the tag, all right? I screwed up. You need a parentheses there, not there. Maybe I screwed up, I probably screwed, you need the parentheses after OPEP.
Uh, the post-employment benefits, OPEP trust fund.
Because it's, it's, the benefits trust fund, OPEP relates only to this.
Okay.
But you can also take out the quotes when you put it in parentheses.
Sure.
Okay.
By the way, your page numbering is all screwed up here, you notice that?
We know that.
Okay.
We know that.
Page 15?
Everything's 15.
Into, into the trust fund. Oh, into.
Sure. Um, yeah, so that, and the next one's a five-year school bus contract. I, I didn't put this on the last list that we looked at, and, because it was still evolving schools, getting us stuff as they're going through their process. This is basically giving approval for a five-year contract. We have better rates, if we go five years, it's a standard, a lot of, this, with these types of contracts, as I understand it, five years is commonplace, but we need from the town to vote to approve the ability for the schools, and when I say schools, it's both tri-town and mascanomic, to negotiate a new five-year contract instead of a three. Three or less is typically, can be done without any type of additional approvals. This needs to go to town meeting. Also, just say that they have been in five-year contracts, and this will get us in compliance because the language didn't exist, this is the language.
That, what happens?
It wasn't in the warrant prior, the, we had, the schools asked us about it, they send our existing warrant articles back in 2006, as they thought it would be, around five-year contracts. Two of the three communities did not have a warrant article approved referencing this, so this is now getting us to compliance.
We're just getting.
So, this is a housecleaning issue.
Housecleaning and going forward.
Yes. Any, any problem with having a five-year contract, the school bus company?
Well, what it does is, it gives the opportunity to see whether negotiating for a three, or a five, or a four-year contract would produce a better deal than only getting.
Potentially, yeah. So, I would, but the one thing I would do is, in the warrant, it would say, in the first sentence, to authorize during the ensuing year, in other words, this is not a blanket thing that town, that town's going to provide in the next hundred years, it's for this particular negotiation that works.
You don't think we should make it, they can?
Please make it work.
Um, why do we need to limit it to the ensuing year?
Because we don't want it for a century.
Why don't we want to have it as a permanent thing?
Because the town meeting has an opportunity in five years, if they want to do another one, or whatever the case may be, to agree to do it.
I don't see anything wrong with that.
Yeah, during the ensuing year, and then, the only question I have is that, in the, in the recommendation, as described in article 30th, and approve said article, that's garbage, we don't need that. Everything that's in here is in here. Sometimes when you have a zoning article, for example, you have the warrant text, the following thing is a zoning article with the following changes, you put all the stuff in there, and then the recommendation refers to do what was in the warrant.
Strike that.
This one.
School transportation period.
So, those other changes look good too.
Okay, in the explanation, good. Next then.
No, by the way, there's a typo under EG, a bus contract. There's a T missing.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Last line of, a five-year bus contract.
What's it?
See in the parentheses?
Yeah.
Says transportation services, open parent, EG a bus contract.
Yeah.
The T is missing, just if you're cutting and pasting.
Oh, the contract was, I'm sorry.
The word contract is misspelled.
Yeah, it should be, and it's, okay.
That's all.
Thank you. Okay, and that's it?
If he's cutting and pasting.
Okay.
And then 31st is really, this is more to allow us to do this and get the revenue.
So, I'm talking with, no, no, has, we really ought to understand what it is doing for, I'm talking with Tor, and she's going to help me come back on this. One of the questions I have for Tor is, this, we're doing two things in this article. We're giving the Board of Selectment Authority to do these kinds of agreements, the negotiations, we're giving the Board of Selectment agreements, and then, we give them permission to do a specific one. So, it's like, you don't have to put anything in there. If you give us the permission, you don't. So, and, and so I'm talking with her, she said, yeah, you should only be doing it for the one you're doing. If there's a non-asol one that comes up, I mean, if we have them coming in every day with a new solar, I'd say, oh, we're going to figure a way to do this. But she, she's going to come back and, it still may work.
This is going to get redone, we can move past it now, it won't change.
Exactly. But we, but, but, but having that said, this doesn't change the revenue that we get at all. This, the, the owner is the one that wants this to be done, more than the town wants it to be done. The owner is trying to go to the bank and say, I'm going to build this plant, and I'm going to get this much revenue, and it's going to cost me this much to maintain, and when they can lay out an agreement that says, I'm going to pay this much this year to the town, this much, this much, this, this, this much, the, the bank feels a hell of a lot better than to say, well, how much of the taxes going to go up on that? So.
But it does save money for the town.
It doesn't save money.
No. I'll, I'll use the Bauxford Solar Field, for instance. Bauxford is very interested in having Masco buy some of their solar energy credits. They will sell them to Masco.
Oh.
At two-thirds the cost of buying that same power on the open grid, on the open market. So, what happens is, if Masco says, we'll buy those, then they get the power nominally from the solar, and they only pay, they pay a third less.
Yep, yep.
They pay a third less, so that's how they save money.
That's right.
So, the owner makes some money, but the person who buys the, buys the credits, the solar credits, can earn money if they negotiate a good deal with the person.
I don't think that's part of this.
They should come to the town, isn't it?
I don't think it's part of this agreement.
Am I right?
This is only the one in lieu of taxes.
No, let's be. So, it's two components.
Two, it's two components.
The pilot component of it is on the, 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 the product they're building on the property, so we can still get taxes on the property, but this is for the personal property tax component of it. So, we'll negotiate, to Selectman Gant's point, a set schedule of payments that are solely around the real estate and the prop, the real property on that real estate. The, the ground's established by us, but the, we'll negotiate the things on top of it, the real property component, or the personal property component of it. There is an opportunity for us, if we want to, is, because it's, it's being privately developed and privately owned, but they need an off-taker. So, these developers build the solar array, just as the chairman was saying, and then they need to find someone who they can sell these credits to. It's like a Groupon, is the best way to say it. So, you buy the, you buy this credit, you buy this Groupon at a certain price, which is cheaper than what it is on the open market. What I've spoken with this developer is, I said, well, this is the first major array that's coming to Topsfield. How are you going to market it as a community solar property opportunity of, can Topsfield residents be the first one who can be off-takers of it? Can we be an off-taker to it if we want to, and have a similar arrangement if we choose to do so? Which they said certainly, because they, they just want, they, it's still their benefit to have people lined up who are ready to sign and, and take on these credits.
What the bank likes.
Exactly. So, that makes the whole financial model work for them.
Pre-sell, pre-sell your own.
But what we can negotiate is the rate, because we know, it's not on our property. We can go to our, we don't have to buy those off-take, the off-take, we don't have to off-take on a Topsfield property. It's nice to say we're off-taking on the Topsfield property, we don't have to. We could go to the marketplace and say, what other solar arrays being built in this area, in this region? Who wants us to buy those Groupons or off, those, they off-take it. And we could say, your discount rate's eight percent, we want even of order, you know, whatever it is that, you know, this, we can negotiate these rates with these guys. If we go in and say, yeah, negotiating over the camera, but, you know, if we go in and we say, they say it's going to be eight, eight, eight discount rate, and we say, sounds great, let's do it. There might be a better deal out there in the marketplace. So, we're going to leverage that when we talk to them, but there is some, there's a nice little story too, if we talk about sustainability, if we can be an off-taker on a, on a, on a grid that's in, sorry, in Topsfield, that we can take advantage of. Once in a great while that happens.
I know.
Sorry. I'm getting better about it. But yeah, so, so that's sort of what the arrangement is moving regards to this. This pilot is specific to the first, the two things we talked about, specific to negotiating the personal property and what we're going to ask for real estate.
This is, okay, this is a different issue.
Other things.
It's a different. It's an initial benefit associated with the deal.
And it's conceivable you could write one agreement, but one is based on statute, one part will be based on statute, the other part is on, so I would see that as two separate issues.
Yeah, I, I agree very clearly. This is only about the pilot, not about the agreement that, to purchase solar credits. And I apologize, because I was getting a little confused myself. This is really just, in a sense, it is about money to the town, because the payment in lieu of taxes, if negotiated, is money the town gets that it might not other get, otherwise get.
No, no. We would, if we did nothing, we're going to get the money, because it's personal property on a piece of property that is out of Topsfield. We would assess the value of it and get the money in taxes for it.
There's no legal reason that they would have a benefit.
However, one of the things that would happen is depreciation. So, we would keep getting less taxes every year, but we got a nice upfront tax, so that maybe worked well for us. On the other hand, something may happen and depreciation could add a lot more, and we lose all that tax money. Something happens, right?
Don't we get it on the land, even if the?
Well, that's a different story, there's two components of taxes, this is personal property only.
Personally, okay.
Okay. So, so what this does is simply lay out a plan, and it's a negotiated plan, that we could say, we want more upfront, and if it's reasonable to say, it has more value then because of depreciation, we can get more revenue up here, and then less and less and less, or we can say, make it even, whatever. But there's a lot of negotiations going on to try to figure out what the value is, what's the present value, if you don't think it matters, there's a lot of discussion.
This allows us to negotiate.
Right.
And, and then have a plan that says, we know that for the next 20 years, we're going to receive this much money, or this much money, or maybe it's an equal amount every year going forward from that, even though the, the appreciation's going down, we're still going to receive the same amount of money, whatever it is. But in my mind, it's really more important to the, to the.
Oh, I agree with you, yeah.
To the owner.
The other thing I see.
But we also don't have to go out and assess it every once in a while.
Right. The other thing too is, also mention that, when we did the pilot, and we did this in Beverly, we did a pilot on, on, it's standard operating procedure with these developers to enter these types of agreements. So, it's not something unusual at Topsfield, this is standard language that's used in other places. What the, the reason too, for the pilot, to sort of say, for the benefit of us from the town side, is, at least a couple of years ago, there was some question on how we could value that personal property, and so it takes that out of the equation as well. The exposure for them to come in with a tax abatement or a request, and then we have to negotiate that out. So, it's, to, to Selectman Gant's point, it gives us certainty, which is a really nice thing to have, and hopefully, it benefits us in a lot of.
Any reason that, I mean, I don't see any problem with the minor changes that are proposed here. I understand it better now, which I thank everyone for. I understand it better now, which I thank everyone for. Fine, go forward.
Look at that, just the explanation.
Okay.
I'll take it with that.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for the clarity. Okay, thirty-second.
So...
This is really housekeeping, from a financial point of view.
And it's, the, the, the only thing is that, because we had two in there, we were gonna do the roofs and the water mains, but we're leaving the roofs for now.
Really?
So we just have the water main project, the five-thirty debt. I just need to change now the above reference in the explanation, above reference project. It says projects, so it's just a minor, you know.
Oh, yeah, I understand. There were two projects in here, is what you're saying.
Correct.
I was wondering what happened. Why there was a plural, okay.
That's why.
Good, okay. But we need to have, and I, we're gonna talk with, do you, do you know which article, I'm trying to figure out which project it is.
I didn't, that's, I didn't have time to research it before I went to the sunset, and I'll get those.
You just feel better.
But I changed the wording, but I changed the wording here. This article will rescind authorization...
Would rescind.
Would, I would much prefer it that way. Would rescind authorization to incur debt for the unused portion of debt of a project that has been completed.
That was authorized and yet it's completed. Or rescind, no, 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 those finances, 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 step back. No, I'm fine, fine.
I had changed it, I had changed it to...
Yeah, I see what you've changed, too, I'm fine.
I had changed it to incur...
I'm fine.
I changed, and then I changed it back to this.
I'm fine, I'm totally fine with that.
Okay, and then the last sentence is, this is housekeeping action.
Yep, that's, that's fine. So, the next one, the Home Rule Petition, this is one that I might spend a little time on, obviously, and this one's a very, this is one I mentioned at one of our last work sessions. This is one where Home Rule Petition, it's gotta be worded exactly right. It needs to go, obviously, to the state for revocation. And so, as work, I did work with KP Law on this particular one, and there's a couple of things, and we're working very late until Friday evening on this one. So there's a couple of things that I do still need to clean up a little bit, but the general language is there. The last paragraph in the, in the first section, I'll point out that original, original, original version had a Department of Public Works, that should've been removed in this version. So just by way of clarity, that's not what we're talking about. Every other piece of word, I mean, this does not talk about that purposely. This last section was a hang, a hangover, or came over inappropriately, so that's...
What, that paragraph D?
Where is this, yeah, give me, give me a reference.
It's the last paragraph, D, the last bit, right above the section five.
Yeah.
And it's just talks about the first sentence on the pa, page fifteen, on the page of that next page. Shall forth at the rate of compensation grade step, where time serves because of the establishment of the Department of Public Works. That's not correct language, I need to clean that up.
Okay.
But the rest of it is, there's a couple of small cleanups I need to do as well. I just wanna point that out, just in case there's any questions on that. Like cemeteries in C and D should be cemetery, not cemeteries, department, cemetery, department.
Why'd you clean all that up and bring it to us? Cuz I think this is, clearly something that's gonna be guided primarily by precise wording that need to be put together.
The, the rest of the language talks about, from, the rest of it's the essence of what we talked about, which is basically the existing commissioners becoming an advisory committee at a certain time in a future date. And at the, at that time, the department heads would then report to the town administrator. There are a lot of reasons that we've talked about, and I don't know if we wanna talk further right now, considering the rest of the work we have to do at a future meeting about this one, I'll leave that at the discretion of the chair. But, you know, what we've talked about, other than that last line that I referenced, that I found after the fact, that we, everything else is basically...
I actually wanted to have Lynn in on, cuz I think she cares a great deal about this, but I think we should leave it open. I know there's a feeling whether that should be this year or potentially for a future year, and I'm certainly open to us having those conversations, in this case, suggested to start later and so on, but I, if it's okay in the name of time, since something was gonna have to give here, would it be okay if we postponed a deeper discussion of this till Lynn's with us?
Yes, of course. Let me just say, I had, didn't really dig into it badly, I read it. I actually think it's very poorly worded. It is far too complex for a state law, even though it's just a Topsfield. It, it screwed some things in here, you know, which, it, it's not the right thing to do. I think it's very poorly done with all this wording. If, if you wanna do it, it's got to be done much cleaner than this. This is, this is very foolish to have that kind of wording in a state.
This is a lot for the people on Town Hall, Town Meeting Board.
And this, and so, and so I would say, so I don't wanna discuss it anymore, but I, I agree, let's have Lynn here when we discuss it. And I think you know my position on it for many reasons, but that's besides the point. But that, I just wanna make that comment that I, I, it's just not a good, I, I think it's crazy.
How, how much of it is...
Not the concept, but the, the wording is...
Yeah, how much of it is required by law and so on and so on. I'd like to...
And screwing it in as a...
With Lauren, who obviously I mentioned, because it's very legalese, helped me with that one.
Well, then, you, you pay by the word, right?
I hope not.
I think so.
I'm gonna suggest we wait, when we have full board present, we do have the conversation, and that we, you know, it's one of those things, decide not to do it this year, or whatever. If we decide not to do it this year, then we don't worry about whether it's worded properly or not.
I'd like to just make one last, two, two thoughts and one comment, or one comment with two thoughts in there. One, I have had a chance to speak with all the commissioners on both the affected part, bodies. And my read of it as of right now is that we do have support for it. The question that's out there that needs to be determined is, how do we get from where we are today to where we wanna go and...
The transition.
What's that transition look like? And so I did put in here an effective date that's out to January one, two thousand and twenty-one. You know, bringing on that department head, I don't think it's gonna be a very heavy lift. We already work hand in hand, those department heads on a lot of fronts. But understanding and, and making sure we have a set, a process set up for the existing bodies that have such great institutional knowledge and are passionate about their communities, I wanna make sure that that component of it, we, we take care of. And I think we are having a meeting that we're trying to set, set up when, when Phil Knowles gets back, so that we can have all the commissioners in a room and just have a real frank discussion on sort of what we're doing here and why we're doing it. Like I said, individually, because this was coming, I didn't want people to be surprised by it, so I have had individual conversations, and every one of those have been very positive for it. And so, just by updating timeline with our timeline on this, that meeting should be a week ahead.
Twenty-six, one more day.
Twenty-six, that's when he, Mr. Knowles gets back, and that's why we're, we're pushing it to that.
I don't see anything in here about the formation of a recreation department.
There's a lot that we can discuss in this.
There's an awful lot going forward, yeah.
It's a bit, it's a bit...
That's, that shouldn't probably be part of this, the, the great decent pieces.
I, I mean...
I agree with you, and theory was where we should go. That would make a really big bite, much bigger.
There'd be a lot more words from the legal side.
So, we're gonna talk about that one another time.
I think this is a big bite in and of itself.
Okay, Article thirty-four.
So, I, I, I think, this is written by, by K and P, right? And they've done this many times before.
Yeah, it's my understanding.
So, it, and it looks good to me in every way, I don't see any problem with it. The only problem I see is what we have here, like a formatting. And, and I guess, I don't know why I didn't do it on Saturday, but there's something wrong here. The A belongs by the first select board, maybe? And then a B, and they have to be inserted. I, I don't know what it's supposed to, what we're trying to say it'll look like, but...
Oh, this is, paragraph, you mean, like paragraph?
I think, I think what we want...
A is to insert the definition.
Like this, and this, to be in, but you, you have both things, you don't want it hanging, you know, all that sort of thing. So I, I'll, I can do that if you have trouble, but that, and I think that's the way it's supposed to be. I think that's what they want.
I check on that, cuz I, to me, it makes sense the way it is, but I'm not saying you're wrong, Dick. I can make sense of it.
Oh, yeah, I would say, I, I...
The na, the way that it is here.
My inserting, but is it A inserting?
It's by, it's by doing two things. One is inserting in chapter one definitions, a new definition, and further, second thing. In each instance they appear, then you can substitute select board, or select board member for the words and so on.
That's how I read it as well.
So, there are two, two actions to get to.
Maybe that's what happened on Saturday, I read it that way.
It may need to be indented, Kevin, if possible, indent the A and B pieces over ones, so that it's clear, they kind of...
Maybe so.
That A and B gets lost.
Just move all of it over.
Okay.
A and B gets lost, that's right.
Okay.
That's why I left it, that's why I didn't do anything on Saturday, I guess. Okay, yeah, 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 yeah.
Article thirty-five of street numbering. The, I'm, I'm trying to be, reflecting on this, is I'm trying to be consistent. So street numbering in the title, I refer to it in here as street...
I'm talking with Tor on this one also, and she's, she's getting some stuff from me. I asked her for some stuff on it. Yeah, so what, what is your point on it?
It was just wording, it was just making sure that this, that street numbering at the top is, it says street number here, street number here, and then somewhere in here, refer to as street address, uh, street addressing.
Yeah, that, that, that's, that's all of the stuff, that's all of the...
Yeah, street numbering is a little bit confusing.
Yeah.
Seems to be, it should be...
Lot, lot numbers, or, or...
Lot numbers, or...
Address.
Here's what I found, though. She said that there's a model that the state has for doing this sort of thing, but she didn't have it in her hands at the time. So I asked her to kind of look at that, and I said also, and she agreed, that the state doesn't always get it right the first time. So, we don't have to take what they have, but if they've got a model, I'm not too interested in changing it unless it's obviously wrong. So I took my changes out, and she's, she's gonna take...
Let's set that aside for now, then.
Set it aside.
We'll set Article the thirty-fifth aside for further information. Article thirty-sixth.
Okay, so, one of the things we have to do here is, is amend, it, it, it comes in, the, the title has to change, so it really explains a little bit better what it's doing. It's always challenging when the chapter is, oh, it is chapter thirty? Ah, I didn't think about that.
Yeah, I, I thought that, too, and I, I double-checked it, I looked at the...
Anyway, I see what they have there, and, oh, the only thing I, I think at the... I, I just scratched out the last paragraph, or last phrase on the explanation. From however on, I took that off. Leave the board access to all other tools that may have protective health, I mean, that's like trying to sell a little bit, it's somewhat confusing about tools and stuff like that for people. It's my suggestion to take it out. You know that I will not support this, and if it, if it stays on, I will speak at town meeting about it. Let me, let me explain what we've done in the past. If the, if the Board of Health has some things that they wanna do...
Are we gonna take a vote on this right now?
No, we're gonna wait for Lynn.
Then shall we wait for that explanation now, Dick? Cuz I'm concerned about the time, we've been here all three hours.
Right on.
So, let's go to Article thirty-seventh. We've been through this, I think we're set on this finally.
Yeah.
So Article thirty-seventh, we're set with one...
So this, though, has to be written a little differently.
Yeah, totally, that's it, it's a placeholder.
We have to put the changes in, and I, I think the way, way we might do this, because it stretches out a lot, is to simply put the whole thing as a pen, attachment B or C, or whatever, attachment, and then use the wording that we always use, which say, strikeout is deleted, italics added, that sort of thing.
So, could we just put in what we're proposing to adopt, or...
You can put in cha, so-and-so change from to, so-and-so change from to...
I don't wanna get into...
I think in this case, it's easier to put, because it's, I mean, if it were ten pages longer, we have one here, one here, one...